Seven o'clock, smaller meeting to order and we'll have our city clerk read the remote meeting instructions.
Pursuant to Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation regarding suspending certain provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act during the COVID-19 outbreak, the Toppenish City Council will not accept in-person public comments. All members of the public wanting to comment on city council agenda items may submit written comments to include your name and address for the record in advance by email to the city clerk by 4:00 PM on October 12, 2020, to be read during the meeting. To remotely attend this meeting, register by selecting "Join a Meeting." Call-in information for listen-only mode is (253) 215-8782, meeting ID (857) 8945-8087, pass code (512) 926. Email the city clerk or call (509) 865-6754 with questions.
Thank you, and if we please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, now if our city clerk would please do the roll call.
Mayor Oak.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sovedra.
Here.
Councilmember Belton.
Here.
Councilmember Seha.
Here.
Councilmember Duval.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Let the record show we have full attendance and a quorum.
Thank you, we move on to item three, approve the agenda for tonight. I entertain a motion.
To move.
Second.
Okay, that was Mayor Pro Tem Sovedra, and seconded by who? I didn't catch.
Clara, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Jimenez, thank you, to approve tonight's agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on to item four. Advanced public comment received by 4:00 PM on October 12, 2020, to be read by staff at the meeting. City Clerk, Heidi Rojas.
Mayor, let the record show the city did not receive public comment by the stated deadline.
Thank you. Move on to item five. Consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda have been provided to each council member for review and are considered to be routine, or have been previously discussed and will be adopted by one motion and vote without discussion. However, if a council member desires, any item on this agenda will be discussed before any action is taken on it. Item five A. Approved minutes of the September 28, 2020 special meeting. Five B, approved minutes of the September 28, 2020 regular meeting. Five C, approved minutes of the October 5, 2020 study session. Five D, approved payroll checks numbered 35067 through 35078, and the electronic transfer in the total amount of $172,657.77 dated October 9, 2020. Item five E, approved claim check numbers 92625 through 92704, and the electronic transfer in the total amount of $450,693.40 dated October 12, 2020. I would entertain a motion.
I. Consent agenda in its entirety.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Jimenez, and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Sovedra to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move on to new business. Six A, update on CARES Act funds for small business grants. City Manager Height.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on the CARES Act grant funding program. As you remember, we have a pass-through agreement with Yakima County Development Association to distribute our CARES money. We received approximately $273,000. We have about $80,000 that we're going to be using for our own COVID-related issues, and we have approximately $190,000 to be distributed to small businesses. We had a total of 102 applications. Thirteen of the applications were outside the city limits, so they were disqualified. There were about nine that did not have a valid business license, Toppenish business license, but they did have a state business license. They're being afforded the opportunity to go and get a city of Toppenish business license. So that leaves us about 84 eligible businesses remaining. These 84 businesses were scored on the criteria, with extra emphasis going to businesses that have not had any financial assistance from any other CARES Act program. So we were able to fund, with this list, we were able to fund approximately 20 businesses at $190,000, for that $190,000. Two businesses will get, excuse me, about 18, well, 17 will get $10,000. There's two that requested $7,000, that was their request, and one business requested $5,000, so that'll be their request. The scoring range was between, the highest possible you could get was 30 points. Our scoring range, the highest businesses received 25, and the lowest in this first round of funding was 17 points. None of these 20 businesses have received any other financial assistance, and this is their first bite at that financial relief apple. So, right now, YCDAs, either Thursday or Friday of last week, sent out an email announcing to the successful businesses that they were selected. And in that email, it included an agreement that they need to perfect. They need to sign that agreement. I think there were five of those businesses in that group that didn't have a city business license. They thought that a state business, they only needed one business license, a state one. And so they're afforded the opportunity to get their city business license. So once that process of signing the agreements and getting those ratified, then we'll actually have the list, and it'll be public. At that time, the city will do pass-through money from the city budget to YCDAs for distribution. On that same day, we plan to make our reimbursement request to the Department of Commerce for that same amount of money, and hopefully within that 10-day period, that money will go out and we'll get our reimbursement. And then that first line of COVID money distribution will be complete. So, that's the first one. There's a second run. We got another second round of $136,000 that we will be able to also distribute. The city will probably keep about, somewhere around $50,000 to $55,000 of that for city use for other COVID and overtime and other issues that we're computing right now. And then that'll leave us approximately $80,000 to distribute again. The plan is to use the existing list. We already have a list that's out there, it's been vetted, it's been scored, and we would be able to go down that list with the next $80,000. So there's some options out there that we need to decide what we want to do. We could, first off, we could pick that number at $10,000 and pick up another additional eight businesses, plus or minus. Or we could reduce that ask down to $5,000 and pick up another 16 businesses. And then we would just continue down that list that we have, selecting the businesses that haven't had any financial help from the other programs. As we all have probably been listening, the federal legislature's been talking about another round of CARES Act money. I don't know when that's coming, if that's coming. It could come before or after the election, and we don't know how much. And we also don't know what it can be used for. That whole program's kind of changing a little bit as it flows. So, assuming that there'll be another one, the thoughts could be, we could go first, the second round could be $5,000, pick up another 16. The next shot of money, once again, we don't know how much it's going to be. If it's quite a bit, we could fund the rest of our list. Or we could backfill the other five up to $10,000 like that. But we don't know what those dollars are yet. So we'll have to wait until those come about. Did get an email, I think I shared that with council last week, from Senator Murray is on a committee to find out, to create some more small business relief. And in that, there was an opportunity for nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s that may be eligible. We don't know the full rules and the eligibility of that program yet. On Wednesday at 9:00, we have our YCOG meeting where we run down the issues for the area. And we have, Zach is one of the staffers on Senator Murray's staff that will be on, will be zooming in, and he will give us a rundown of that program and what the requirements are. So we'll know more at the next council meeting, what's happening there. There was also a new eligibility opportunity. We saw that, I think the city of Sohomish had some dollars that they were able to assist renters with utility building or rent ability to pay. They had it listed at $500, it was their limit that they gave out. We don't know the source of that money yet, if we could use part of ours for that or not. So, that's one of the reasons why we're kind of hanging on to that second round at this point, to see what our options are to best serve our community. So, are there any questions?
Lance, I'm going to go ahead and begin with the fact that, you know, we already talked about this core care money, and what we're bringing in is still care money, and we said it was going to be for small businesses. We've already discussed this and said it was going to be at $10,000. We've already done an ordinance or whatever saying it's going to be $10,000. People can ask for less if they want, but I don't think that we should now go say, well, second round, and we think we get more people. But the thing is, if you start bringing that down, there'll be actually less money that they actually need. And I just think, I don't think it'd be fair that, if I was like number 21 on the list, and I thought I was applying for $10,000, and now you guys decide, oh no, now it's five, because we're really trying to save our money for the nonprofits. But that wasn't what this was about. This CARES money was for small businesses. And I just think we need to stick to what we said, which we said $10,000, because that's what they apply for, because that's what we put the CARES money out there for. So I myself just think, we said $10,000. I think we should keep it at $10,000 for the small businesses. They can ask for less if they want to.
At this time, these two rounds, these two pieces of money, nonprofits are not eligible. So they're out of the thing. It's any new money that may come along later that may make them eligible. And we'll have the opportunity at that time to say yes or no at that time on that. So this is only small business money right now.
And Lance, I also have a question. What was that? Go ahead Clara.
Well, I was just saying, I think we should stick with what we had told the small business people when they first applied, that we said $10,000. And now for us to go back and say, oh, now we're going to change it. Yeah, you applied for 10, but now this is a second round, so now we're going to reduce the price. I just don't think that's right. I mean, I just think that we said 10, it's a CARES money, it's for small businesses. I think we should stick with the 10 that we said we were going to give out.
Well, on that note, I also think that, I'm also I'm also leaning towards maybe opening it up to a smaller number. That way you can help out more businesses, but I think that's something that we can discuss later, if we do get more money. But my question was for Lance. Do you know if we are providing any assistance to the businesses that have been identified that do not have a Toppenish license? Just because I'm thinking Olympia is closed, a lot of government agencies are probably not open or have very limited hours. How are we making sure that they are getting their business license for Toppenish?
Those businesses are located in the county or outside our jurisdiction, and they have the opportunity to apply for county COVID money. And I do not know if they still have that open or not, but I know that I was talking with Jonathan Smith, and there were still funds available.
I'm talking about the businesses that were identified that applied and are potentially going to get the funding, but do not have a city license.
They're afforded the opportunity to go get a city business license.
Right, and are we offering them help to get that?
YCDAs, YCDAs is helping them do that.
Well, if they were able to get a state license, I would sure think that they could go get a city license on their own, but.
Well, there was a, there was a new thing that happened, and everyone had to get, had to do it through online. I think that's also, it's becoming a barrier for them, that are people that are not tech savvy.
So they could, I'm sure they could go through YCDAs for help, or call City Hall, and we would help them.
Thank you.
And they, those businesses, I think there's five or number of them. So we should know who those people are, and they could call and we could help them.
Great. That's good, because I think they should have an opportunity to get that. It's not hard to get a Toppenish city business license, and I don't think it's expensive either, but maybe, like you were saying, they were just confused in regards to, since they had the state one. Thought that it covered, yeah, it covered. Um.
There's been quite a bit of confusion off and on forever, whether a person, they always thought, the business might think that all they need is a business license. And they may only get the state, and they may only get the city, and there was a few that got both. And so, we actually were under the impression that once the state took that over, when you clicked on the state, you would get both. But evidently, that's not happening.
Yeah.
So those five people that were told that they were successful on the list, they know that they need to get that city license, and I'm sure that's incentive for them to call us.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
In regards to the amount, I would have to say that I too think that we should keep it at the $10,000 for now. And then, if we need to touch base on any other funds that we get in the future, then at that point, we can then review it. But I think for now, we should leave it at the $10,000.
Okay.
Anyone else? I guess we'll move on to item six B.
Before we, before we get away from that, we'll have to bring up a another agreement or resolution for the distribution of that, the remaining of that 136, and at that time, we'll put $10,000 in there. And hopefully, I'm looking at my calendar, hopefully I'll bring that at the October 26 meeting, if all this other stuff falls in place.
That's good.
All right. Is that the, I guess, should we vote on that $10,000 and make sure everyone's?
We already did. Already did, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Done. All right, now we'll move on to six B, I believe. Set the agenda for the November 2, 2020 study session. City Manager Height.
Well, the agenda for the study session will be budget, budget, budget. We'll have the budget and the message will be in that one, will be given to council, and we should have a, the complete set of budget books to go around for everyone to start reviewing. We met with, we went over revenues amongst ourselves with council here at our last meeting, pretty much. And I've met with, Debbie and I have met with the different department heads in this last week. So, once all those numbers should be put together, we should be ready to go. So that will be budget on study session on the 2nd.
Everybody's got to be good with that.
It's the season, yeah.
It is that season, yes. All right. Item seven. Council meeting reports and community announcements. Start with Councilman Garcia.
Nothing to report.
Councilman Seha.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Duval.
I had to mute myself. I do want to report that about two weeks ago, I did a tour with a group of people to look for potential locations for extreme weather shelter. I believe we are still looking for a location, it hasn't been finalized. So if anyone has any suggestions or ideas, you can email me. But I also want to thank Frank East, he's with the Hope for the Nations Church. On Sunday, woke up to my neighborhood being graffitied all over the place. And this morning, I was surprised to see most of that graffiti already covered up by 9:30 AM. I was so surprised, I got off my car and touched the paint, and it was still wet. So thank you so much to them, I know that they took about four and a half hours this morning to take care of that. And it just shows that we have people that care about our community and take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Belton.
Nothing for the good of the order.
Councilwoman Jimenez.
Just would like to echo what Councilmember Duval stated, how we are really grateful to Hope of the Nation and Frankie's for all their hard work and painting all the graffiti. This, what I've noticed, is now a pattern. That has been happening like every two weeks. And you'll wake up on, I think it's either Saturday or Sunday for sure, and Holy Side is just horrible with all this graffiti. And I won't say who the gang is, but they show no respect whatsoever for anything, including our places of worship. I was walking by on a Sunday, I believe two weeks ago, and I walked by the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which is the one over by Blue Sky Market, Kitty Corner from the Methodist Church. And the whole wall, from top to bottom, had this huge painting of some clown doing what shouldn't be going on. And then you look at the fence, that's concrete in the back, all tagged up. And these poor people, I mean, these churchgoers, had to see it probably on Saturday. I saw it Sunday morning, but it's got to end. And I don't know if it's the, we need to have police going out more on Friday nights and Saturday nights to see if we can get them, or what. But this is ridiculous, but I'm very grateful for the people who are out there covering up all this graffiti that is just horrible. My other concern, that I've seen a lot more in the east side, because that's where I'm at, and that is the dogs being loose and running around day and night. Dogs, dogs, and it's, and they're awful. I had, one of our community members was walking down towards my place, and she was bit by a dog, Kitty Corner from where I live. And, yeah, they've got a kennel, but they don't put the dogs in it. So I just think we need to start enforcing all these laws that we have that comes to dogs. I know that our policemen are busy, but I'm talking more about your animal control person. I haven't seen them around here, but it's really out of control. So those are my two issues, the graffiti, which we need to put an end to it if we can, and then all these dogs that are running around east side need to either be contained in their own yards, or they need to be picked up and taken away.
I'll share that issue with the police department tomorrow. I know we have a contract with the Humane Society or Yakima County Animal Control. I see that pickup around, but is there any certain time they're out there? Clara, or they're just out there? They're just out there all the time?
They're just out there all day. My house, you can, I mean, I don't even own the dog, I love dogs and everything, don't get me wrong, but I'm the one picking up all the doo-doo off my yard. Seriously, when you start wondering, did I go get my mail? Or should I wait to see if the dog's inside his yard?
Yeah.
That's really not safe.
Yeah.
So.
And it's, and I think he would be more successful in finding the dogs if he was on foot. If you're on foot, I mean, the dogs will definitely start following you, but if he's driving around, the dogs are, they won't follow the cars.
Yeah. And I think dogs get smart after a while, they know that truck.
Right.
You know, they do.
You know the scent. Thank you for listening Lance.
All right, I'll share that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sovedra.
Wow, I really don't have anything to report. I just want to encourage the parents out there to keep an eye on their kids, to know where they're at, if they're out at night, to find out what they're doing. And there's usually a culprit, somebody new, maybe somebody new in the neighborhood that's starting to do that feels a little brave, but we definitely need to come together as a community. And if we see anyone or have a particular idea on who is involved with that graffitiing around town, then I think people need to speak up and say something, because it's our town, so we have to have pride in our town.
Right, and if your security cameras captured it, share the picture, see if anybody recognizes the people that did it.
Yep, perfect, yeah.
Speaking of kids and evenings, is the city taking any kind of a stance or recommendation on Halloween trick-or-treating this year because of COVID?
No, not that we know of.
Is it, Clara, do you know whether the school district is or not?
I know that the Renaissance Group was thinking about, but right now, everything, they keep thinking the department, the health department keeps knocking it down. So, like, you know, we thought, well, maybe you can have one of those trunk treats, you know, you have your trunk open and no, then we thought, well, maybe we just give them candy, no, because they're still so, so far, everything that, the ideas that have come forward have been knocked down. So, we're trying to.
Yep, the ideas that I've heard are the trunk and treat, like you were talking about, the requirement to mask up and stay six feet apart. Then they talked about putting your candy out in a bowl outside your house. I don't know how long that would last, probably to the second guy, but.
I tell you, my bowl would fill that pillowcase that that kid has.
I'll bring that up at the YVCOG Wednesday meeting, see what other communities are doing.
Okay. Well, we need to schedule a follow-up meeting for the city manager's evaluation. The city manager anticipates sending out additional documentation this week. So does the council want to schedule a 15-minute executive section for October 26 meeting, or?
Yeah, well, that sounds good, you might want to make it 30 minutes, just in case, I mean, I don't know.
That'll work for me.
Yeah, but do it before.
What date did you say?
At the next council meeting, the 26th.
26, oh yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 6:30 then?
Oh, you want to start at 6:30? No, Heidi would like to do it during the regular meeting, and that way we don't have to do a special meeting. Or we could do it at 6:30, I guess. Or we could do it at six thirty, I guess. That would work too.
But don't we want this to be more of an executive session, though? I mean, if we want an executive session, I think we should have it at six thirty, make it a special one. Do it at six thirty and then come, be done, and then come back at seven for the regular one. Because maybe by then, we'll, we'll be able to know what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Everybody's good with that?
Would you like to go fifteen minutes and you can extend it longer? Or do you want to go thirty on the top, right out of the gate?
Make it twenty, and we're right in the middle. And now we got ten minutes to go potty and do what we gotta do.
Yeah, okay, all right. During the evaluation process, for the last couple of weeks, Council asked for some information, and I'm getting all that around. And I'll try to get that out by midweek or the end of the week to your city. Email, and that way, when, that way it'll come out, and you'll have an extra week to look at it. Otherwise, you'll only get it on the, the Friday, the twenty-fifth, and you'll have to see it on Monday. And so that gives you an extra week. So I plan to get that out this week for you. Appreciate it.
Okay. So are we saying that it's gonna start at six thirty? Yes? For twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty minutes, six thirty, October twenty-sixth.
All right.
So question Lance, you've mentioned the cog meeting, I think it's this Wednesday coming up. Are we all going to get links or how's this going to happen?
Oh, I do not know about the general meeting at this point. This is just the meeting that we have at nine o'clock in the morning.
Right, I'm talking about the actual cog meeting, because I thought by now we should have gotten something.
We usually get an email.
Yeah, and I haven't, I don't, have you guys gotten something? Because I haven't gotten anything.
Heidi, have you heard? She said no. No.
We'll just wait, thank you.
Okay. Usually that's the third meeting of the, the month, isn't it?
The twenty-first, it's on the twenty-first.
Let me know.
At six thirty.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item eight, the city manager's report.
Pretty much got my report done. I, I would like to also thank Frank East and his, his church group. For the graffiti removal. The city at Toponish purchases the paint and has, and we store it. We have recycled paint, new paint, all kinds of different paint that they have to use. That way they don't have to keep track of it. And if you look at Rocky's Public Works report each month, there's a graffiti report. And it shows how many square feet they take off each month. It's a tremendous amount. They do a terrific job volunteering and taking care of that graffiti. And if anybody has graffiti out there, please contact Public Works or City Hall, and we can share that information with. Frankie's group, so. That's a wonderful service that they do for our community, so, and that's all I have tonight.
Very good. We'll move on to item nine, that is adjournment.
Meeting is adjourned.